We are dedicating tonight's moment of silence. It's with a heavy heart we dedicate tonight's moment of silence to our dear friend, employee, and longtime Wayne resident Suzanne Koransky. Suzanne passed away peacefully with her family by her side on May 29th after a hard battle with the coronavirus. She leaves behind her loving husband of 40 years Jay, her two daughters Jamie and Sarah, along with her husband Daryl, and her beloved granddaughter Sadie Willard. Suzanne was a dynamo who was involved in every aspect of her children's lives as well as service to the community. While raising her girls, she was involved in the PTO, nurse at Camp Veritans, as well as the cooking lady, and produced countless plays at the Y. In her spare time, she continued her education and became a certified school nurse, as well as received her Masters of Curriculum and Instruction and Supervisor certification from Caldwell College. Suzanne returned to work as a school nurse in 1998 and dedicated more than 20 years to the Wayne Public Schools. She began as school nurse at Skyler Colfax Middle School, went on to become lead nurse, and finally serving in her role as supervisor of health services as part of the Wayne Schools' administration. The governor honored her service during a press conference on Tuesday. "This virus is cutting too many lives short. We mourn them all." Suzanne's family has set up a scholarship in her name, and anyone wishing to donate can send a check made out to the Wayne Board of Education with a note specifying it is for the Suzanne Koransky Memorial Scholarship and send it to the board offices at 50 Ellis Drive. Our hearts go out to Suzanne's family and long list of dear friends as we say goodbye to a selfless woman who gave so much to so many. Rest in peace Suzanne. We will all miss you. Flag salute. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. You can chime in everybody. I can't talk. "To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." No roll call again, right Mr. Moffett? We'll go straight to the superintendent's report. Dr. Toback.
Just quickly before I get to my report, I would also like to echo the sentiment expressed by so many people, Ms. Suzanne and her statement and many others regarding Suzanne Koransky. She was truly a person who was loved by everyone who met her. She just, she is, she had such a presence in our board office. She was so rooted in the community. As a professional, there is no one who was more up to speed and aware of issues related to school nursing. And we miss her every day. We miss her every day. She has been a real, real source of strength for the school district for so many years. And there are so many programs and so many things that happen in the school system that in many ways have her as the foundation. So, you know, there's no, there's no words that can describe the loss that we've experienced. So, I'd like to get on to another topic that is very important in the community. Like to, as part of my administrative summary report, I'd like to talk about graduation. So it's very important for leaders to stay calm and focus their thinking in even the most difficult of times. And at this point, I would think we can all agree that we're at a difficult moment. I'd like to suspend our district goal report later to our next Board of Ed meeting to make time to talk about what matters most right now, which is the recognition of our high school seniors. Under normal conditions, the community would enjoy a host of wonderful in-person events that recognize our seniors as they move on to the next phase of their lives. Sadly, all these events were taken from our seniors and their families, and we can all sympathize. Now, we are in a state of disarray as a community when it comes to recognizing our seniors. This is only adding to the difficulties for the class of 2020 and creating turmoil. Fact is that COVID-19 continues and will continue to create turmoil, adding to the turmoil of the constant changes in the form of executive orders that happen with little or no advance notice, adding to the problem. Our examples that run counter to social distancing requirements. One example I've heard repeatedly is how can 1,000 people be allowed on a beach with social distancing, but we can't hold a socially distant graduation for our students? There are dozens of questions. There's examples, counterexamples, and few answers. As always, our top priority is the safety and well-being of our students and staff members as well. We've been very careful to adhere to the executive orders and social distancing requirements. The district has struggled with keeping up with executive orders because there is a press conference, there are questions from the community, and expectation for a response, and then days later, guidance from the New Jersey Department of Education. Nobody is to blame because these are unprecedented times, but we are constantly playing catch-up. Latest changes were announced on June 9th at 1:00 PM with a little advance notice. State's limit on indoor gatherings went from 10 to 50 people, and the limit on outdoor gatherings went from 25 to 100 people. The number for outdoor gatherings will increase to 250 on June 22nd and to 500 people on July 3rd, assuming the downward trends in the state's COVID-19 outbreak continues. That means New Jersey schools would be permitted to hold outdoor graduations up to 500 people as of July 6th. Prior to this announcement just two days ago, the school district was constrained with a limit of 25 people for an outdoor event. We still have a requirement where we are unable to have any modified in-person event before July 6th, and at that point, we're able to host an event for up to 500 people, which still does not allow for our traditional graduation event for a large school like ours, where we have an overall attendance of at least 2,000 people. Mayor Vergano understood the anguish so many were feeling, and he recognized the constraints that the district faced. He sought to resolve the problem by working with other residents to hold a full graduation event on July, or June 18th, Owen Valley, and June 19th for Wayne Hills. The Board of Education respects any effort to help the community through a difficult situation in an unprecedented time and wants the best for our students. The Board of Education has made it very clear that we want nothing more than to celebrate the class of 2020 with all of our students. We are unable to do what the mayor is planning. The unfortunate part with the municipal graduation event is that the school district is unable to be officially involved because we will be violating executive orders and we would be risking state aid and other action against the district and employees. So it is not that we don't want to be involved. Keep in mind that I am not suggesting in any way that staff members cannot attend, nor have I directed anyone to not attend, but staff members cannot take an official role. We're all living under these executive orders, and it is certainly beyond my roles as superintendent of schools to violate any of them because they are in place to protect all residents from COVID-19. As we all know, Wayne was not untouched by COVID-19, and our district suffered greatly with the loss of a beloved colleague and longtime resident, as you heard just a few moments earlier. Again, our first priority must be the safety and well-being of students and staff members. Some of the questions the school district would ask if we were running a large school event include what implications and liabilities exist when holding such a large event during this public health crisis? What about the spread of COVID-19? And what happens if a resident does become seriously ill or worse? Who would be held responsible, and what kind of legal defense could be offered? How do we reconcile that almost every major college and university just ended this academic year with virtual events due to executive orders and safety concerns? I believe that as a community, we can do better. What I'm suggesting is that we meet with Mayor Vergano and try to discuss this issue further. Unexpectedly, we are able to have up to 500 people at a school-sponsored graduation event, which is still not a full graduation, but we have a good option with that 500-person limit. The other option is to recognize this year for what it is. It's a year like no other. One possibility is that we may not be able to find another way to move ahead. In that case, rather than add to any turmoil or confusion in the community that might exist, the school district could take a step back, reschedule the broadcast of our virtual graduation to a date and time that does not conflict with the events for June 18th and June 19th, even though our graduation was scheduled for that day, June 18th at 6:00 PM, and then consider other options that do not interfere with the municipal events of June 18th and June 19th. Regardless of any other outcome, we wish our graduates and families well as they enjoy the recognition from the municipality on June 18th and 19th, and we look forward to seeing all of you on July 30th for what will be a wonderful graduation event. Another way for the class of 2020 to look at this is that instead of having one awesome graduation, we'll now have two. At this point, I'd like to open the floor for board members to discuss these ideas and offer other options.
Anyone wishing to speak on this topic, folks? Mr. Bubba?
So, if the trend keeps going, that we can, that it's going to be 500 on July 6th. Now, I realize that that doesn't allow for one graduation for each high school because we'd probably need about 1,000 people at a minimum, based on 300-plus students, two parents, and staff. So you're probably at 1,000, if not a little bit more at that point. But, the trend is leaning towards higher numbers. If we kept the save your date date, which, you know, I thought was crazy in the beginning, just based on the DOE and the fact that we weren't allowed to have any in-person graduations, question is, would we be lucky enough to be able to do something on the 30th with a full graduation, rather than, right now, it looks like it would be two graduations per school? And that would be if you did them on the same day, you'd have to do them staggered because you have to clean according to the rules set out by the governor in that situation. So, the other day when we discussed things, I think keeping that date and being able to do a full graduation, that is our best opportunity. It's not going to happen on July 6th, as the governor has said, because at max, it's going to be 500 people. So, that's my thought. Keep the date, and let's see if we can get a full graduation in.
Mrs. Kumar?
Okay, so, as far as the overall situation, as we discussed, yes, July 30th, hopefully we could have even possibly more than 500 people. My concern, first of all, as the mayor decides to go through with this, and the governor has stated that it's against the law, that he goes through with this and there's no social distancing because he's expecting everyone to arrive at the exact same time. So that's something we need to consider more on our end as a district when we're talking about our possibility even on July 30th, so staggering people as they enter. So that's just a general concern. And then, when we talk about July 30th, maybe people may not want to go on July 30th if they decided to go to the mayor's celebration. It might be worth it for us to put out some type of student survey or parent survey to see what their interest is, and also keeping in mind, who knows, based upon some of the statements by the governor today, it might be called off in some way, shape, or form, based upon what has been said today in the press conference.
Anyone else? Mrs. Putta?
I agree with Mr. Bubba that our best option is July 30th, and I'm hoping that the governor eases the restrictions even more after July 6th.
Can you speak a little louder, please? We can't hear you.
I totally agree with Mr. Bubba, and I'm hoping that the governor will ease the restrictions even more after July 6th, so that we can have a graduation similar to the ones that we have hosted in the past. I know that we all want to wish the class of 2020 well, and the best way we can do that is by keeping them well.
Thank you, Mrs. Putta. Anyone else? Okay, the only thing I want to say is, hopefully, in spite of the governor's comments today, that if the event's happening on the 18th and 19th or runs smoothly and actually happen, then after that, we have a lot to think about. We have to think about either more opening up of the state, which could work in our favor if we want to do the July 30th event on July 30th. If he, governor, opens things up sooner, because right now, it's 500 at July 3rd, who knows, maybe by July 10th, he's going to say, you know what, all bets are off, no limit, outdoors, which would be wonderful, because then we could plan a full event for each high school. So, at this point, I think we should give it a couple of weeks and revisit it, because right now, we only know what we know. And that's been the problem all along, obviously, with the planning process, because it's, you know, death by a thousand cuts, ripping the Band-Aid off ever so slowly. So, I definitely agree, we should continue thinking about our July event and wait and see for now. Let's hope that all goes well again for the graduates, and I think moving the virtual was a nice idea. Fully support that, because then they can have that event, their event, every event, here event, their event. So hopefully, like I said, the governor will continue to lift the restrictions into July, and we can revisit this at our July meeting, and for now, continue with the save the date of July 30th, if the board is in agreement with that. I don't think we're voting on it, we're just talking about it. Am I correct, Mr. Toback? I'm sorry.
Yes, and the other thing I just wanted to throw in there is just the idea of moving the virtual event. So, both high schools have excellent virtual events that are in production. They're scheduled to be delivered on the 18th. However, that, obviously, that does conflict. At this point, the board does have, as part of its normal process, you approve a date for graduation, so it is something that we normally do. This is obviously very unusual. So, a virtual event, does the board have any preference to when we would show the virtual event? Is that something that you would like to talk about, or is that something you would like us to consider and coordinate with the mayor's event and with our administrators?
I think that should be a building decision. I don't have an issue with you and the principals deciding that. Anyone else have a comment?
Building level, yes.
Administrative prerogative.
Okay, Mrs. Shear, did you miss all of that?
Unfortunately, I did miss most of it, because I'm, my son was receiving an award I was watching, so I'm very excited about that.
Wonderful, congratulations. Do you want an update, real quick?
Yes, if you wouldn't mind, I would greatly appreciate it.
I'll give you the Reader's Digest, as Mr. Geppert showing his H said. Well, basically, we're talking about moving to virtual. Does anyone have a preference on date, so that it won't conflict with the events that are already scheduled for the 18th and 19th? And then, July, keeping our July date with the hope that, and Dr. Toback was just saying it, even at 500, it's not a full graduation, because for the number of students, we can't get everybody in, when you add parents, et cetera, unless we did it in two stages, yada, yada. But, the bottom line is, we're all pretty optimistic that come July, just like he's told us every couple of weeks, here's more, here's more, here's more, we can most likely have a full-scale graduation if we just hold off another couple of weeks and wait and see. And, you know, see that the other events go smoothly, and then go from there and discuss this at a later meeting. And just keep the 30th for now. So, this is comment time, if you had anything you wanted to add.
Oh, I have a lot I want to add. I have a lot I want to add, but I'm not going to at the moment.
We're not all going to cry tonight, are we?
All I'm going to say is, and this is really like for the public that's listening and watching right now. As I sit here, I'm a board member. Unfortunately, I cannot take my heart out of it, because I have a graduating senior, and I have a graduating eighth grader. It's horrible what everybody's had to go through in this time, whether it's a graduation, a loss of a family member, no matter what the extent that this has affected people is horrible. However, what I do need the public to know is that the commenting and the obnoxious meaning, meaningless remarks that are being made about the administration and the Board of Ed is very, that is one reason that I'm so emotional right now, is because I sit here, every, you think we just meet every other week. There is so much more to this job that goes into it, and administration has been planning since day one for these kids to have an in-person graduation, whether people want to believe that or not. I have been fighting since day one for my child to walk across the stage along with all of his friends, and that includes hills and valley kids, because my husband and I are very involved in the community. And the fact that parents would think that we really, for them to say that some of these people do not care about these kids is so hurtful, and I just want people to know that it is so hurtful, and that this administration has done everything to make sure that this district stays top-notch through a time where we have no idea what to expect. These teachers have stepped up and done everything that they've needed to, and these teachers deserve the right to go and say goodbye to their children. Those are their children too. And they, I'm a teacher, I spend more time with some of these kids than some of the parents do. These are our kids, we want to say goodbye to them, these teachers want to say goodbye, the staff wants to say goodbye. Unfortunately, the mayor did not involve us in his plans, and I wish that we had worked together. My only suggestion at this point, and then I'll done my speech, but my only suggestion is at this point, is that the Shared Services Committee meets with the mayor, and we try to come together to bring this town back together, so that we can do exactly what everybody is saying they want done, celebrate for the children. It's not about the moms, the dads, the guardians, it's about the seniors. And I'd love to say the eighth graders, the fifth grader, all of them. I wish we could celebrate all of them in this manner. But for right now, if everybody truly, truly believes that this is about their seniors and not about them, then let the school system do their job. And the school system's job is to graduate their class. Mr. Ruick and Mr. Palzuski have the right to stand there and graduate their seniors on their football fields at the place where they have put in all their time and effort for four years. And anybody who wants to talk to me, it's sshear@waynschools.com. Please, if you have any questions, or you doubt that I am fighting for my own child, let alone yours, please contact me, because I would love to talk to you about it. That's all I have to say. Sorry, I took so much time.
Thank you, Mrs. Shear. You have every right to speak on this topic. Mrs. Kumar?
I did want to say, and this was, I was waiting for the right time, and I feel like it is the right time now. So, this is my last class of students that will be graduating this year as seniors. I had them as freshmen in the chemistry courses, and it's very emotional for me. I don't know when I'm going to go back to teaching. I'm at home with my son, and I do miss teaching, and I miss being with those kids. And the idea, as Stacy said, that we are not interested in graduating them is just not true. And if you have actually watched any of the board meetings since this all happened, almost every meeting, someone has said something about the seniors, someone has said something about trying to get them to graduate in person, and really honoring them. And if we take a look at everything that the seniors have asked for and the parents have asked for in their surveys, we've looked at that, and we felt, again, that if we could push back the date, we could have, try and grant more of the wishes that were asked for in that senior survey. So, again, if you really have questions about things, and you want to know what we think, I think it's important to ask and really go to the source. And I think some of that is part of what's going on here, but we really do want the seniors to graduate with their teachers, with the staff, with the community that they want to say goodbye to, because that's what it's about for them. I know parents want to see their kids graduate, I know that's important too, but it's also, you know, some of it's the rite of passage for the students, say goodbye to that community they've been with for the past four years, and we all want that for them.
Thank you, Mrs. Kumar. Anyone else? I think I've expended enough emotion, but I will say one thing, I hate Facebook. That's it. It's not a way to communicate with the board, it's not a way to communicate with anybody on a serious matter or topic. If you want to talk to any of us, we're available. We serve you. You elected us to serve you and to protect and educate your children, and we take that job very seriously. I'm going to get upset. Go ahead, Dr. Toback, stop the Facebook. We have email addresses. I'm not going to read it anymore. I think I'm going to kill my account.
So, I just wanted to let the board know that Mrs. Shear brought up the potential of having a Shared Services Committee meeting, and so, she brought that up, and I just wanted to make sure that we didn't move on to the next section of the meeting if there's further discussion.
Who's the chair of the committee? We haven't had one since I've been president. I don't even recall right now.
I don't know if we made a chair, per se, I feel.
I think it might be me.
Maybe it's me.
I don't know. Well, anyway, I know I'm on it, so.
You know I'm on it.
You got two people on the committee that are willing. To me.
I believe you're on it too.
And who's the administrator, Dr. Toback? You?
Yes.
Well, then feel free to call a meeting.
Okay.
It's an established committee. I don't know what we're going to discuss, but we can talk about that with an agenda prior to.
Okay, all right, fine. Should we go on with the rest of the admin summary?
With your report?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, there's a few of the things I'd just like to talk about this evening. One of them is the work of the reopening school committee. So, classroom, school buses, schedules, food service, extracurriculars, classroom activities, projects, assemblies, shared experiences, every part of the school day, and the before and after-school experience will need to be modified. Consideration given to social distancing as we look to resume operations next year. And in addition to all the work associated with closing this school year, we're also working on a comprehensive plan to reopen for next year. So I'm happy to report that the district has a good start in considering many of these issues as our return to school committee and eight subcommittees continue their work considering these many issues. One of the things that I think is helpful was the creation of a mock classroom at Randall Carter Elementary School, which helped greatly with being able to see exactly how a socially-distanced classroom would look. It does not look like the rich learning environment we normally have, because under social distancing, many items that would normally be kept in a classroom would need to be removed. The students are spaced at least six feet apart. There are 83 staff members, oh, and I'm going to share a photo of that classroom with all of you, and Mrs. Putta perhaps can describe a little bit more, because I'm going to ask her to talk in two minutes. There are 83 staff members and five parents that are involved with our committees and subcommittees. I'm also happy this week to welcome Chris Smith, the Wayne Boys and Girls Club, to take part in our discussion. We also welcome other community agencies to take part in these discussions, so that we can share ideas and hear the perspectives. If there are any community agencies that would like to take part in these discussions about reopening school, social distancing, or any of the practices that the district is considering as we look forward to reopening next year, please feel free to reach out, I'll be happy to include you. Mrs. Putta, you are the board member who is the delegate to the committee, and so I was wondering if you had any comments you would like to share with the board.
Thank you, Dr. Toback. I've been sitting in on some of the committee meetings. I'm overwhelmed by the amount of planning and work that it will take to reopen in September, knowing that in all probability, that some type of social distancing will have to take place. So, a lot of the committees are coming up with Plan A, Plan B, Plan C. One of the committees that I'm sitting in on is assessing student progress in the fall when they return. How do we do that? On the secondary level, many classes stand alone. You might have U.S. History I, maybe a lead into U.S. History II, but you have to identify the important components of U.S. History I before they move, and what did they miss as they're coming into U.S. History II? Math is important, because math skills build one on another, so they will have to be assessed. Foreign language skills will have to be assessed as students move on to the next level. On the elementary level and on the secondary level, we've talked about the social and emotional we've talked about the social and emotional health of our students. Um, we're not going to assess them the day they walk into the building. Uh, we need to give them time to adjust. Um, we have certain programs in place like, um, iReady on the elementary level that will help us figure out where the kids are in their academic development. Um, we're going to pay special attention to, um, and have a summer session for our special education students. Uh, we have, we're aware of our basic skill students, English as a second language students. And we just want to gauge where they are, but also first have them feel comfortable coming back to the school environment. Then we get into PPE. Will students be required to wear face masks when they come to school? What will that look like on the elementary level? How can we pull that off? Will it be face shields? Um, the PPE committee and other committees have reached out to experts in the community. Um, help, that, the PPE committee has, has reached out to healthcare professionals to get their opinions about various equipment that we might need. Um, I sit down on the disinfecting committee. Um, Mr. Meso has always done a great job. He's trying to figure out how to deploy his staff to make sure that there's a third shift on, that's what it looks like right now, that will come in after the general cleaning of the building for disinfecting. We have a parent on the committee whose real life job is disinfecting commercial properties. And he's been very helpful as far as, you know, types of cleaners and what needs to be done. There are some that will last for forty-eight hours. Um, but you also have to make sure things are safe for our students and for our staff. So there are a lot of things being taken into consideration. Um, I, I've been very impressed with the work that's being done as we move forward, and it will be ongoing during the summer. So that's my report. Thank you.
And just to have two final things. First of all, in response to some concerns that have been expressed by some former students regarding the diversification of our curriculum, we're working on developing a district goal for next year. At this point, we've created a draft goal, which is focused on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and has a far reach into many areas of our operations. So we look forward to sharing some more about this goal in the coming weeks. Finally, my HIV report during this investigative period, there were five incidents reported as HIV. After investigation, one of those reported incidents was found to be an actual case of HIV. And as I said, we, we would normally do our end of year goal summary report, but we're going to forego that, knowing that we've already occupied a lot of time, and we can do that at the next meeting. And, um, I think it'll work out better than that.
That's your call, Dr. Toback. Uh, so we got HIV, you, end of year goal report will be tabled for now. Uh, rigid revisions to the agenda. Mr. Moffett?
Yes, we have a few items tonight. Um, in the public work session area, under M, uh, the human resource section, we have a change in M1, which is a PDS approval for extracurricular coaches. Uh, we are adding Wayne Hills, number twenty-two, Ryan Bailey, change from assistant coach, soccer boys to head coach, soccer boys, step four, eight thousand six hundred and ninety-five. Uh, we have under M12 salary adjustment. We're going to revise number one on attachment. Uh, the spelling, uh, should be V-I-T-T-O-Z-I. Under O, uh, PWS resource, school resource finance, we'll be moving, um, the PWS item, school resource finance, which is the approval of a finance, um, energy savings plan down to the, uh, section V, under emergent resource finance as new item three. I'll go into that later in the agenda. Um, we have an item in T, emergent human resources. T thirteen, approval of additional compensation, and that reads revised, uh, resolution to read. Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of a superintendent, approves the following additional compensation for staff members for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and the two thousand twenty dash, two thousand twenty-one school year. Um, in the emergent school resource, we have that moved item from the PWS, which is approval to advertise for bids to finance energy savings plan project. We will be amending, uh, the date in paragraph four, and it'll be changed from February fourteen, two thousand twenty to June second, two thousand twenty. And we're going to be inserting and adding sec, two sections. The first section reads as follows. Um, the energy savings plan submitted by Amoresco and developed with the professional staff of the Board of Education dated June second, two thousand twenty, or as otherwise determined by the Business Administrator, Board Secretary of the Board of Education is hereby approved and adopted as the energy savings plan of the school district. Section two, right after that, uh, states, "The Board approves and adopts the recommendation of approval from the Board of Public Utilities of the Energy Savings Plan dated June second, two thousand twenty, and authorizes the Board of Education to post on its website in accordance to NJSA eighteen, colon, eighteen A dash, four dot, six C, parentheses, three." Further down on the agenda, under X, which is emergent school resource legal, uh, we're adding two items tonight. The first item is the approval of memorandum of agreement, uh, which reads, uh, which is for the Teamsters, which is recommended, uh, as reads, "Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, hereby approves the memorandum of agreement between the Wayne Board of Education and Local Eleven, affiliated with the International Brotherhood of Teamsters dated June three, two thousand twenty, for an extension of the collective bargain agreement for a one-year period from July one, two thousand twenty through June thirty, two thousand twenty-one, and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The Business Administrator and Superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of the memorandum of agreement to further implement same." Uh, the other additional one is number two, which is the approval of the memorandum of agreement, which is WPA. And that reads, "Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, hereby improves the memorandum of agreement between the Wayne Township Board of Education and the Wayne Paraprofessional Association dated June nine, two thousand twenty, for an extension of the collective bargain agreement for a one-year period from July one, two thousand twenty through June thirty, two thousand twenty-one, and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The Business Administrator and Superintendent are authorized to make all further steps required by the terms of the memorandum of agreement to further implement same." That concludes the revision to tonight's agenda.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moffett. Um, this is the public portion on agenda items only. This portion of the meeting is.
Ms. Kazan, I'm so sorry to cut you off. Before you go on, can you just, Mr. Moffett, can you just tell me, um, the revision? I missed the one, um, for the memorandum for the paraprofessionals, that what the number was.
It, it is X, number two.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
You're welcome.
X. There's more. Sorry. Yeah, it's X. Okay. Uh, back to the public portion. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under old business. Can I get a mover?
I'll move.
Mrs. Shear, Mrs. Kumar. I see one hand raised at the moment. Hello? Hi. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kim Tatora. I live at eleven South Hall Court. And I'd like to make a comment with regards to the graduation portion of tonight's meeting. I, in the beginning of the meeting, when Dr. Toback was talking, I thought it was great. And I'd like to acknowledge that I'm hearing that the town and everybody wants to come together. Um, we'd like to give the students, if possible, three graduations, a virtual, the mayor's ceremony, and the school traditional one, if possible, because these students have been robbed of most of the rest of their senior year. And I really want to acknowledge that that was great. And it finally started sounding like a coming together and a focus on the students and trying to get them some memories and something other than a void for their senior year. But I do have to comment that towards the end, once again, I heard division and blame and negativity. And I just wish we could stay away from that. Um, I hear that, you know, it, it's, you know, it's not an either or, these two ceremonies. I think what the mayor is doing, while it's not traditional, it's something to possibly get these students together in case the governor ties our hands further, and there can't be a second ceremony. And I acknowledge that we'd love our students to get together with their teachers and administration and all of you, but it doesn't have to be an either or, and it doesn't have to be any negativity. In addition, I heard that we should be going to the source. And I just want to acknowledge, I sent all of you attending this meeting here an email two weeks ago, a positive email, no negativity. We had over a hundred parents from both Wayne Hills and Wayne Valley come together, and what we brought were some real positive, three simple proposals to try and get, keep things positive. And I did not hear back from any of you other than one person. And so when I'm hearing, here's my email address and reach out to me, I did, and you did not respond to me. So I apologize. I'm, I'm insulted by the end comments, but I want to acknowledge and thank the beginning comments, especially Dr. Toback, what he took us through. And I, I hope we could get all three ceremonies, and I'd love to, the kids to acknowledge all three. And what is important about the first ceremony is there are children who are leaving for school, and I know one in particular leaving for military school and will not be able to attend the later ceremony. So please keep that in mind. And as the negative comments came in, we kept saying, let's focus on the kids. But it sounded like, let's focus on the students if the school can be involved. And I want you to know, parents had also opted to say, if you can bring the students together even without us, we'll help with that. So I just hope that we could stay closer to the beginning of the comments and positive and not get back to all that negativity towards the end, and you were reached out to. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I see another phone number, so we'll need to know your name and address so we know who we're talking to, or hearing from, rather.
Stuart Resmer, eighty-two New Street. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
You know, I really don't understand what the mayor thinks he's doing, and I'm, I am really annoyed by it. The school board seems to me has a purview over graduation. And where did the mayor ever got the idea that he could unilaterally do something like this? When we look at today's data, that twenty-six states or fifty-two percent of the states are reporting an uptick in coronavirus cases, uh, in the last month. Another eight states or sixteen percent are considered to be flat. The remaining sixteen states or thirty-two percent have decreasing COVID-19 cases. It's astonishing to me that a man who went before the township every day for a while, they're giving us the sad statistics that we've been listening to, is now waving a red flag, if I could use that phrase, against all this, uh, data that's going on. Do you realize in these states, this thing has jumped up thirty-six percent? In Arizona, they are now running out of beds the way New York City did just a while ago. The Indian nations are under siege over this. This thing is run wild through the society, run wild through the world for that matter. And for the mayor to come along now and put everybody's health at risk because for some reason he thinks he's got a better idea is astonishing to me. You all know that I spent time in up that William Patterson University test site on those early days, and I will never forget the faces of those sick people that came in those cars over and over and over and over and over and over, with children screaming in horror as those swabs were put up their nose by people wearing hazmat suits. This is not a game. This is not a joke, and this is not a time for political grandstanding or some sort of stunt. I just heard the lady talk about she doesn't want negativity. Let me say something with all due respect to the lady. This is not negativity. This is deadly serious, deadly serious, right across the country, right across the globe. We don't have control of this. There is no vaccine. There is no, uh, medication that you can take to stop this thing from taking your life and everybody else's if and when somebody carries it to any one of these functions and then takes it away. You are fooling with disaster, Mr. Mayor. And I don't know, I don't know what it's going to take to get through to these people that this is deadly serious. And I, and I, the, the fact that you memorialized this nurse is not lost on me today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, Mr. Dr. Bishard. I'm sorry. I believe there's a Stacy with her hand up.
Hi, Stacy Lupo, thirty-six Woodlot Road in Wayne. Um, I'd like to thank everyone for speaking up about their, um, concerns today, especially the gentleman that just spoke before. Um, I would like to address that for a second because I think everyone does take COVID very seriously. Most importantly, I think our kids take COVID seriously because they have lost so much because of COVID. I think everybody has lost, whether you've lost a loved one, we've all lost people. I knew Suzanne very well. I've lost loved ones. I think everybody has been touched by COVID in some way, shape, or form, and I think everybody gets it. We had a wonderful protest in front of the municipal building on Saturday that many of you attended. Um, there were over fifteen hundred people there. And I don't understand why this gentleman has a concern now about a ceremony in front of the mayor's office on the eighteenth and nineteenth, when we had over fifteen hundred people in a beautiful peaceful protest on Saturday. You cannot pick and choose where you allow people to be okay to be in large settings. It's part of our constitutional rights to protest. Those people protested because that was their constitutional right. Um, I don't think it's fair to pick and choose what you are going to get upset about when people congregate. So I just wanted to address that to the gentleman. In addition to the comments earlier, I'd like to follow what the lady before had said. Um, thank you, Dr. Toback, for trying to bring things back to some normalcy. Um, I am one of the parents who's working on the committee with the mayor. And we all just want what's best for our kids. I think everybody wants what, what's best for the kids. Unfortunately, um, after Monday, when we received the email from the district, we felt, and I shouldn't even say we felt, I can tell you, the kids felt. They became a pawn in a political game of egos and politics. And I want you all to remember, this is about our kids. This is about the kids. It's not about what the parents want, and I'm sure there's parents that want a lot. The kids just want to walk. And every day for a week, it's been roadblock after roadblock after roadblock. If you drive past Wayne Hills and Wayne Valley until yesterday, or I should say today, you would not know that we had three hundred and thirty seniors graduating from our schools. There is not one thing commemorating our seniors in front of those buildings. And to, to, until two parents reached out to Ms. Kazan and asked her, why are emails have not been answered? So when you questioned why our emails weren't answered, and you all said we could give you, we should reach out to via email, I know I personally wrote many emails to Dr. Toback, to Mr. Palzuski, to the board. I know a hundred people were behind an email that went out last week, or more so a hundred and fifty, and no one responded except one person. So I understand that everybody is very frustrated, but you need to understand that we are very frustrated. And not only are we frustrated, the kids are frustrated. The jig is up, everybody. They know who is running all the shenanigans that are going on. They are not stupid. They know that they have been failed. They have been failed. You failed them. No one recognized our seniors. Would it have been so difficult? Would it have been so difficult to show any support for them on any school property until parents had to reach out over and over and over and over again? And now you have signs on hills because you were able to accommodate that? And the Valley kids still have nothing, except a parent reached out and tried to get these signs redone and is paying for them out of her own pocket? So that Valley can be represented, so we don't have to tell children to rip their signs out of their lawn and bring them back to Valley? These are the things that when you ask why people are so upset and why these kids are so upset, that you need to take a look back and see what was done. And quite honestly, nothing was done. And if you were working behind the scenes, it would have been fantastic if you shared that with people. And most importantly, if you shared that with the kids. I know that you're trying your best, it's a terrible situation that everybody is in. But you need to think about how the kids feel about this. I'm not, I can't speak for the kills, his, kids on the hillside, I don't know. But I can tell you, the kids on the valley side have field, they feel deserted. And I don't blame them, I don't blame them, I've tried to shine positivity in our house with different aspects. But when your kids drive past your school every single day and there's nothing there representing them, that's sad. So I will leave you with that. Thank you for your time, I appreciate everything you're doing. And in the words reflected before, I hope we can all keep everything positive and move forward to do what's best for the kids. We've offered support to the school several times and no one has reached out to us. So I hope that if someone needs help, reach out to us, we've offered help, committees have offered help. We were here to help all along and unfortunately, we were ignored.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you, your five minutes has been over for a while. But thank you very much, we, we hear you. We have reflected on some things that could have gone better. And when you know better, you do better, and that's certainly how this board feels about communication. I'm pretty sure, unless anyone wants to, I'm not saying we were terrible on communication, but there were certainly some issues that could have maybe perhaps been communicated better. Especially whether we called something a celebration or a graduation, I know that that was something that was a bone of contention. But was there anything that anyone wanted to respond, Dr. Toback, to the public portion? There wasn't any real absolute questions, it was, they were just statements.
I do want to say one thing, if that's okay.
Go ahead, this is Kumar.
I know that at the end of the day, I agree, there was an issue with communication. And I do think that some of us were thinking that certain people were taking the ball that weren't taking the ball in certain cases. And I know for, for the case with me. Also, as we talk about thinking about all of the students as part of this graduation ceremony, part of the concern is we're already losing six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for next year. And if we were to hold a graduation against executive order and condone that, we may lose even more money, we're also losing extraordinary aid for next year, that's already a fact. So thinking about the entire district and all the kids unfortunately does have to come into this consideration. And again, it's not that we don't want things for the seniors, but we have to think of all of the kids in the entire district. And as I said, I want nothing more than to be there when my last class for a while is going to be graduating.
Nothing further? Okay, we'll move on with the agenda, we have committee reports. Is anyone ready with a committee report? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I moved to close, Mrs. Share, thank you, I always forget to close it. Just assume everyone knows it's over. Go ahead, Mrs. Share. And, Mr. Giordano. Okay, I'm sorry for anybody who raised their hand after that, we will have a second public portion in very short order, where you can speak on any topic. Graduation was an agenda item, so, committee reports. Mrs. Putta.
I have reports from the educational committee led by Mrs. Reichman. And with the share, Mrs. Kumar and I were in the meeting, thank you, along with Maureen Weir, our secondary director. We talked about our summer intervention program for special education students. As I mentioned earlier, there was going to be a two-week summer intensive. We talked about iReady, a program that will help us with our assessments. Actually, during the summer session, when the kids come back in the fall. We talked about new middle school science program. There was a committee made up of eleven teachers and three principals, it's called Amplified Science. And there would be online training for new teachers before we get back to school. Also, AP US History, it's called American Pageant. It contains a lot more current materials. There's a stress on diversity and current issues. Then we also had a discussion about our curriculum and inculcating diversity in various areas. The district is going to conduct a curriculum audit to look at all our curriculums and see what type of diversity is represented, whether it's Hispanic or African-American authors. We're also going to, we also have other things, diversity is not just about race. We're looking at how do you, the acceptance of children with special needs, children with autism. There is an LGBTQ curriculum that will be coming into the middle school. And that's also part of the diversity effort. So that's the direction that we're going in, thank you.
Okay, did I see another committee hand up? If not, I'm gonna hold up the phone, so Mr. Duffy can give his report.
Mrs. Albanese, I think it's time to get attention.
Mrs. Albanese?
Just a quick update that the finance committee met tonight, we did not complete our meeting, so we're gonna have another follow-up and we'll do our report at the next meeting.
Okay, I'm gonna let you speak now, okay, hold on. Okay, go ahead, this is Mr. Duffy, giving the technology report.
Good afternoon, everyone, or good evening. Sorry that my computer's not working to its capacity, but tonight, the technology committee met. And with myself, President, we had Mr. Bishard, we had Mr. Pavlak and Mr. Bubba. We spoke about some of the good things that are coming to our district, which have come through this district learning. We have five thousand Chromebooks that are available to go out to our sixth grade and our ninth grade students. Usually, they come early August, but we'll have them by their orientation, giving each one of them their Chromebooks by orientation. We also have some security things that have gone on. We have a phone system that's going to be put into, in two different phases. And we look forward to maybe a phase three for security purposes. I'm not going to tell everybody what schools they're going in. But this is a phone in every classroom that will act as a PA system, which will replace the old PA systems. We're looking to have three schools done. And then phase two in the fall, another three schools done. And looking forward to having all our schools completed in the near future. On top of that, there's, with those PA systems, will also be lockdown strobe lights that will alert parents coming in that there's a lockdown. So that is all I have to report. Thank you, and thank you for bear with me, bear with me with this technology issue.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy, I'm gonna put you on mute, but we'll need you for a vote shortly, hold on. Okay, now we will move on. Was that it for committee? I'm sorry, did anyone else have a committee report? No, okay. So now we'll move on to our emergent administrative, which will approve all of these PWS items for the next, move them to the next meeting. Can I get a mover?
Madam President, I would move the entire agenda, all items into one, into one goal.
If you would like to make that motion. Okay, Mr. Pavlak is moving the entire agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Giordano, thank you for that. Now remember, we have abstentions on, which was it?
X two.
Okay, you all know your extent, your extension item, alrighty. Roll call, Mr. Moffett.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Can you hear?
And then next is Mr. Duffy, Mrs. K.
Yes, heard him? Okay, you're done.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes, on everything and abstain on X two.
Abstain on X two, Mrs. Kumar?
Yes, on everything and abstain on X two.
Abstain on X two, Mrs. Mr. Pavlak?
Yes, and I'll abstain on X two.
Abstain on X two. Mrs. Putta?
Yes, on everything, thank you.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes, on everything, abstain on X two.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes. Mr. Bubba, did the dog vote?
He said yes.
He said yes, okay, just checking.
He, he wants to be a star.
I, I see that, he's, he's an adorable star. Alrighty, we'll move on to the next public portion. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents sort of state their names, addresses and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under old business. Can I get a mover?
Move.
Mr. Giordano, second, Mrs. Putta. Okay, I see a couple of hands there, state your names.
Stuart Resmer, eighty-two New Street. I'd like to respond to the gentle lady's remarks about the Black Lives Matter demonstration at the municipal center. If the lady was inferring that somehow I was there, she's mistaken. I decided not to attend because I was running a fever for a week and a half at a hundred and one point nine. And it was my choice to not possibly infect someone else. And I thought that the demonstrations all across the country were ill-advised in terms of a pandemic, not that the issue wasn't legitimate or isn't legitimate, but the pandemic actually put an element of personal risk above and beyond what we've seen on the evening news. So I did not attend. If BLM had done a driving protest the way they did in Morris Town and Parsippany and many other places, I'd have gotten the car and I'd have honked my horn and flashed my lights. But I didn't do that, I stayed home, so the gentle lady may be under misapprehension that I participated there. I don't see why the mayor can't do a drive-by. I don't see what's wrong with it, if you go to the Santa Monica Daily Press dot com in my hometown, they're doing a drive-by in the car. The Santa Monica High School students are doing a drive-by. And I don't see anything stopping the mayor from doing that right now. And I will say, one more time again, the mayor high-stepping, pulling an end run around the board's purview here is astonishing to me. I, I don't know of any situation where the board has gone around the mayor or council in any of their decisions in the manner that the mayor has done this, nor have I heard a word out of the council about the mayor's unilateral decision. And I'll say it one more time again, this is deadly serious stuff. This, this whole thing is deadly serious. I've had the strange feeling of having the statistics of the Vietnam War of fifty-eight thousand lives lost lifted off my shoulders. With the over one hundred and twenty thousand Americans that have died to this pandemic and the many hundreds of thousands and more that are potentially coming. So, one more time again, this is not a game, this is so serious. And you folks have held the line, and from what I've heard and the comments I've read myself, you're being vilified for taking the, the more careful route and following the governor's instructions, whether the governor be a Democrat or a Republican. Thank you one more time again.
Thank you, sir. Have another hand raised? Okay.
Hi, my name is Brandon Pagola, seven fifty-five Burden Avenue in Wayne. It's actually questions, more than making statements, which is, everybody seems to be doing. One is, do you think there will be any impact? And I know that one of the members had, had brought it up just recently to the potential state aid reduction because we are going against the governor's orders. And number two is in regard to looking forward after, you know, obviously the school year ends. And we dealt with what was one of the, you know, strangest times, you know, in recent memory, you know, keeping people locked up in their homes. Do you see when we open up the school year back in September, whatever that may look like, that we will, what we know as the current virtual learning system being the exact same? Or are we looking to approve upon that? Because what I can say is, you know, fortunately for, for my family, and I know everybody's different, and, and, and I'm not trying to pin one family against the other. You know, we were fortunate enough in this pandemic to, you know, still be employed and all of those types of things. And it's very, very difficult being two working parents, having a full-time job and spending four or five hours a day teaching your children and, you know, following the lesson plan, but there's no real virtual learning going on necessarily. And the teachers are doing their very, very best, this was something that I understand, you know, we thought was a two-week problem, I get it. So getting us through this year, I'm, I'm, I think what we've done and what everybody's done as a community has been outstanding. But I do think that there is some room for improvement, so I'd love to hear some of the feedback that you think would, would work and might be implemented.
Thank you, sir, we'll respond after everyone has spoken, and you're a very attractive woman, I'm looking at your picture. Say hi to your lovely wife, I know you, everyone, I'm not picking on a person, no, I don't know. The next hand raised, Mr. Bishard? Go ahead.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, I apologize, this is Kim Tatura, eleventh South Hulk Court. I'm not gonna keep going back and forth, I just want to respond because twice I've been referred to my earlier comments and I guess support for the three graduations. Just want to clarify, I don't believe anybody is not taking COVID seriously. And I don't believe anybody is suggesting we don't follow safety recall, you know, protocol. I think they've clarified that, I, you know, I think the town pool is open or opening, outdoor dining is opening, the beach is opening. So I don't think we're suggesting, you know, to, to not follow restrictions or we're not taking it seriously. We're just trying to follow the same safety procedures to accomplish another event. And that's all we're doing. And the protest, the reason why it's, you know, crippled, it's just because there were so many Wayne students there, even younger than seniors. And there were, you know, three times as many participants. So we're just trying to say, if we could do that safely, we should be able to do this safely. And I don't think, again, it's an either or that we're trying to risk lives or have a graduation. I don't think anybody would be in support of that, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I see no other hands, can I get a mover? Remember this time? I remember this time. Now, nobody wants to move to close? Mrs. Share, Mr. Giordano. Gotcha. Okay. Dr. Toback, do you care to answer some of the questions? There were, it was just, I believe, one gentleman had some questions.
Yeah, sure. So as far as the state for the district, we are expecting a loss of state, but not due to any involvement or the social distancing issue or the restrictions that are placed on the district for graduation. So that would be something that could happen potentially if the district were involved in a graduation event that are against the orders that we have as a school system. So under those circumstances, we could lose aid. At this point, we're not. I know one of the board members was commenting about the loss of aid. There are two areas where we have lost aid already. One of them is our extraordinary aid account, and the other is our formula aid. And so formula aid is something that comes to the district as part of a formula, right? So basically, the state calculates how much aid we would receive. So the one we know about for sure, the other one we know about for sure that we'll lose, but we don't know exactly how much yet at this point. The district is always looking to improve, so we know the virtual learning experience has not been easy for everybody, and it's been very difficult in many cases. And so one of our goals for this year, we're looking at as a potential goal, is certainly to revise and have a distance learning two-point-oh plan. So if we do go back on a distance learning model, hopefully, we'll see a lot of improvements. Some of it involves technology, some involves professional development. So there's a combination of things we're looking at to do during the summer so that we're ready for the upcoming school year.
Okay, can we get air conditioning in this board office? Oh, my God, it's warm in here. All right, well, we've moved through the agenda. Old business? New business? Anybody's business? Mrs. Kumar?
Just quickly, as we had stated, and a few people, board members have stated that we've had some communication issues internally. So I did want to suggest that maybe we do some type of professional learning together through the New Jersey School Boards Association on communication because it seems that there are issues with different top-down, two other people. I mean, I know that, you know, I'm a new board member, but even there, it just seems like that might be something to consider as board members for us to do together.
Thank you. I saw your hand go up, Mr. Pavlak.
Yes. To address a couple of items. First, the distance learning, Mr. Paragallo. I agree with you. It was not the greatest thing in the world, what we had to put together in literally less than a week. We've learned, we actually had this conversation as a board about how we can move forward with it. And I believe Mrs. Putta even discussed it as part of her report. It was something that we never dreamed of last September that we would even have to. And it's still today is quite a remarkable thing that we are even here today where we are. As far as communications, yes. I think we could have done a better job. Everybody could have done a better job. And Mrs. Kumar, I'll offer you my risk communication class that I teach at FDU. Be more than happy to do it for all of you for nothing in less than a semester. I'll get it into one, one, one three-hour meeting, if you like. As far as honoring our students, I said this last week at a meeting, and I honestly, anybody who wants to honor our students, I don't care if it's the New York Giants, the New York Yankees, the New York Mets, you name it. I don't care. If you want to honor our students, then honor our students. Let's make it about the students. Let's stop this back and forth that I've seen on social media and everything else, this one, that one, and everything else. It's about the kids, the bottom line. I understand. I appreciate where Mrs. Share is coming from. I have a daughter who graduated from college, who had college pulled out from under her at the last minute. Her senior trip to Switzerland, gone. Her graduation, gone. Never even got back to school because school got closed on spring break. Couldn't see her friends. I get it. Believe me. I get it every day. I feel what you people feel, and I can honestly sit here and say that, that I understand where each and every one of you parents are coming from tonight. When you talk about graduation and you talk, or call it whatever you want, it's semantics, in my opinion. Call it whatever you want, but as long as we can do what we can do safely. And yes, the school district has a lot of constraints put on it. And there is also a lot of reverberation we can get from the state. All right? I get that. I understand that. And again, if anybody wants to step up to the plate and honor our students, I'm all for that. I'm not getting into the politics. I'm not getting into it's this, it's that, or whatever. As long as it can be done safely and as long as it honors our students, that's what it's all about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlak. Anyone else? Well, we're not gonna see you again at a public meeting until after the events on the eighteenth and the nineteenth. So good luck. I hope everything goes well. I hope our students enjoy it. I hope there are no interruptions to the plan. We all want the same thing at the end of the day because none of us would be doing this job if we didn't care about our students, believe me. We put in a lot of time and energy. Once again, no increase in our pay and the budget this year. You know, it's still zero, which we know going in, so we're not complaining. But we could do a lot, with a lot less of the free grief. Not that you're not allowed to grieve your elected officials, but I think you get the point. So good luck. Have a good evening. Thank you all very much. And if I could get a mover to close.
I'll move. Second.
Mr. Giordano, seconded by Mr. Pavlak. Thank you all, and have a good evening. Thank you for coming to our meeting.
Good night, everyone. Stay well.
You too.
Best of luck. Stay well.